Brief moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, please be seated. We have a roll call, Ward One, Ms. Gamble is here. Ward Two, Mr. Richardson is on the telephone, he's under the weather tonight. Ward Three, Mr. LaFontaine's here, Ward Four, Mr. Clark's here, City Clerk, City Secretary, Ms. Lisa Plantchard, the mayor, and City Attorney Ronnie Artigues. Under Mayor's comments, first thing we do at the first meeting of every month is we announce an Employee of the Month. And the Employee of the Month is very close to me, in fact, she's sitting right next to me. Employee of the Month is Lisa Plantchard.
(laughing).
Lisa, we've been without a comptroller, right in the meat of budget season and everything, and Lisa has gone, like everybody, gets this award above and beyond, and worked Saturdays, Sundays. Lisa and I were here till eight-thirty Friday night, we were back here Saturday morning. So it's time that Lisa got recognized for all the hours she's been putting in.
Thank you.
You've got some parting gifts?
No.
Not parting.
At least until after the meeting.
That's so nice, thank you.
All right, Item B, under Mayor's comments. Motion to amend and finalize the agenda with the addition of Item 7E under the Board Business Section of the Agenda. Need a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Ward One, Ward Four moves Ward Three seconds. Any discussion, let's go ahead and vote, Ward One?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Well, Two's on the phone, Bobby, can you hear us?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item B, proclamation to declare September twenty twenty-three as National Library Card Sign-Up Month. And we have a proclamation, we have some representatives from the Hancock County Library, and Ms. Plantchard is gonna go ahead and read the proclamation.
The Hancock County Library System oversees and operates public libraries in the communities of Bay St. Louis, Diamond Head, Kiel, Burlington, and Waveland, and serves residents of the entire Hancock County area. The library system offers multiple programs and services that benefit communities and are normally available at little or no cost to its patrons. Additionally, the HCLS manages a website that further enhances its many services through 24/7 online accessibility. In the U.S., September is designated as National Library Card Sign-Up Month, whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all, and whereas libraries help people of all ages navigate the complexities of life, providing access to research, information, and government services that allow everyone to lead more productive and fulfilling lives, and whereas libraries contribute to a strong local economy by providing access to technology and training that are critical to the success of entrepreneurs, job seekers, and students, and whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all, and whereas libraries are welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds to learn together and engage with one another across cultural, ethnic, generational, and economic lines, strengthening the social fabric of the communities they serve. And whereas in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities both in person and virtually, and whereas libraries play a critical role in the education and development of children from storytimes for preschoolers to college and career planning for high schoolers, fostering literacy through a love of learning and reading, and whereas a library card sparks creativity and empowers all people to explore new passions and interests and pursue a path of lifelong learning. And it's been said that the smartest card that you can have in your wallet or purse is your library card. Therefore, be it resolved, the city of Waveland, Mississippi hereby claims September twenty twenty-three as Library Card Sign-Up Month. Waveland encourages everyone who may not have a valid library card to sign up for your own card through your local library today.
Can y'all come up? Janita?
Sure.
Y'all wanna get the photo?
Thank you.
All right, before we move on to Alderman's comments, just a reminder that tomorrow night at six o'clock, we'll have a budget workshop meeting, and Thursday, we're gonna have a public hearing on the budget. The time is gonna be six-thirty. In the Echo last week, there was two different ads, one of them had six o'clock and the other one had six-thirty.
It's six o'clock. It's six o'clock because that's the one that the legal.
Okay, all right.
So they're both at six?
I stand corrected, they're both be at six o'clock the next two nights, okay? All right, Alderman's comments, Ward One, Ms. Gamble.
The first thing that I've got, I would like to talk to you all about the Safe Haven Baby Box. And Monica Ladner is here, if you will, Monica, come up. Monica is the President of the Hancock County Republican Women's Committee, and you're gonna wanna talk into that. She's got some things to hand out to you, and she'll explain what the Safe Haven Baby Box is, and the Fire Chief will come up and say a word with her as well.
It's right here, I just moved because I don't wanna knock everyone off the papers.
I don't know if we're gonna be able to hear you, though.
Yeah, it's gotta be high to be heard.
Anyway, my name is Monica Ladner, most of y'all know me, and I don't know if you've been fortunate enough, but I have been to be able to see a Safe Haven Baby Box in person. The first one in Mississippi was installed just a few weeks ago at the Long Beach Fire Department on Monday. I had been working already a few weeks prior to the announcement of that blessing of that box with the company, trying to get information in detail so that hopefully I could bring a box into Hancock County. So, I've been praying about it, working about it, talking to people, and everybody so far has been on board. I met with the Hancock County Supervisors today, and they gave our blessing for us to move forward. Of course, it's y'all's decision because it's a city building that I need to work with. The place that the box needs to be placed is inside of a 24-hour monitored system, which is a fire department, okay? It doesn't cost to install this box. I have a contractor that will do the labor, licensed contractor, I have a licensed electrician that will do the labor, and so far, everybody I've mentioned it to has said, "I will give you money, tell me when to write the check." I don't think raising the money is gonna be any problem, and it won't cost the city any money to build it, to put it in place, because we're gonna have that all covered. So you're asking, what's it gonna cost the city? It's gonna cost $300 a year, but so far, I've already got the first year donated, because when we get this box, because I know you're gonna work for this to happen, when we get this box, it's leased to the city, we don't own this box. So that $300 comes in, they inspect it once a year, recertify it. If it breaks, damages, they find a better mechanism, they come replace it for free. So that's what the $300 charges, charges for, is for them to maintain the box and recertify every year. So, that is the cost that it will cost, but like I said, I have the first year already donated, okay? So, we would have to get it installed, once y'all are on board and we can make this move forward, we can start fundraising. Once we start fundraising, we've signed the contract, once y'all approve it, we start fundraising, about four weeks later, we'll have a baby box installed. Why do we need a baby box? Well, if one baby's life is saved and put in that box, it's worth every penny, okay? Is there a need? We don't know yet, but my thing is if one baby is saved, it's worth it. So, I would love to have your support, if you have any questions, I would really appreciate it. The one good thing about this is we have legislation, which is House Bill thirteen eighteen, or eighteen thirteen, or a reverse number sometimes. The legislation was passed that a woman can surrender her baby safely in a box without any charges being placed to her. So if someone wants to surrender their baby and they don't wanna go face-to-face, they have a place to put that baby in the box and not face charges, versus throwing it in a ditch, walking and handing it to a stranger, placing it in a dumpster. That mother who is not in her right mind, who is scared to death, does these things, and then she not only has harmed her baby, lost her baby, but she faces criminal charges. So I would love for y'all, let's help give a safe place for a woman to surrender her baby. We want that to be the last option, but we want it to be a viable option. One lady drove over 500 miles to surrender her baby in a Safe Haven Baby Box because that was the closest one to her. Y'all, we wanna make it accessible, pray it never happens, but when it does, you will all know because it's gonna be blasted that we have our first baby in the Baby Box in Hancock County. Long Beach was box number one fifty-eight, and the statistics right now show that every ten days in one of the Baby Boxes, a baby has been placed. So I have a video on my phone, and if any of y'all would love to watch it, if you send me your number, give me your number, I'll let you watch the video. I do hope you, y'all have the handouts, there's more information. The contract is a very simple contract, and like I said, we have a contractor, electrician already on board, and we have this amazing Fire Chief that is ready to jump in and let his station be the place, if y'all will allow it.
Chief, do you have a location for it?
We haven't picked that out yet, but we'll be at the hallway station.
Okay, all right, cool. So do we want to make a motion that we accept the Safe Haven Baby Box at the fire station?
I'll move.
Your second.
And just make it subject to review of the contract, would authorize the mayor to go ahead and sign the contract subject to review.
All right, Ward One made the motion, Ward Two, seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Thank you, Monica. And Chief?
Thank you so much, Monica.
Thank you.
Okay, one other thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, and maybe we can put this on our agenda for our next meeting, but I wanted to just bring it up tonight so y'all are aware of it, and we're looking into some extra details. I've been working with the Fire Chief. We wanna do a Coleman Avenue lighting project, and if you're familiar with places like Slidell, there are a few other places around, what they do is they take these outdoor lights and they go from the city light poles on a diagonal all the way down through Old Town. So we would go from Central Avenue to Beach Boulevard, just down Coleman Avenue. It wouldn't cost us anything. Where, all of the money that we get from the bazaar, the Christmas bazaar, that money has to be donated, so we had talked about maybe donating it to this project, and then we can open it up to solicitations for anybody that would like to buy a string of lights in memory of a family member or whatever, we could finish buying the lights with those. We know that the height of, I'm not sure of the exact height of the lamps right now, we know that they're probably right at thirteen feet. The tallest truck in town is the ladder truck, and that's taller than an eighteen-wheeler. And the ladder truck is eleven feet eight inches high, and we still have about another foot or so above that. So the chief was gonna do some measuring for us in the next couple of days, and I spoke with the city attorney about it, and the way that the financing would be set up, the way that we would pay for it is perfectly legit and within our purview. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. At the next meeting, we'll put, give you more details about it, and then we'll be able to vote on it. We just wanna make sure that we've got enough height and know exactly how much we're gonna need before we bring it to a vote, if that's okay.
Have you checked with the power company about the lights?
Well, it's not gonna go on the light poles, it's gonna go on the city streetlights, not the, you know, the black poles that belong to us, not Mississippi Powers' poles.
We was told before, we wanted to put something on those black poles, that those belong to the power company. We couldn't put Christmas decorations or anything on them, that those belong to the power companies.
They didn't buy them, they bought them.
Remember that?
If they're the city's, we don't need their permission. If they are theirs, then we would have to get.
Yeah, because we don't maintain them or anything either.
So we'll look into that, we'll look into that and see.
Yeah.
We'll absolutely do that. But that, and that'll be all part of the package, we'll figure all that out before the next meeting. Okay, that's it for me.
All right, Bron, thank you. Bobby, you got anything you wanna add?
Yes, sir, I just got a couple of things. Been in contact with Aaron Wilkerson about the light on Nicholson Avenue, and it doesn't look like with his work schedule, he's gonna be able to get that up in any time in the near future. I just wonder if we, I know it's not something we have to bid out, but if we could find a contractor that could possibly get on board to do that. I don't know if we have a list in the Building Department that we could reach out to or not.
All right, we'll start looking for someone.
Okay, and the second thing, I've been in communication with Chief Carver. I know I spoke a couple of weeks ago about, a couple meetings ago about the air conditions in the engines, and Chief Carver, could you come to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
All right, can you elaborate on what you've done so far? I know you said you've reaching out to a company that can do the water pumps, and after that, one company can possibly continue on with the air conditions. And the reason why I bring this up, Mayor, is I know the budgets are very tight, and I'd like to see these get fixed, but if we have to, probably, I mean, I would estimate anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand to fix both of them, if we can get it out of reserve, or where will we get this funded from to get these two engines fixed?
The two engines or the two AC?
I'm just calling, referring to the engine trucks, yeah.
So it's a two-part process, you gotta replace the water pump that has a shaft on the end, that has a pulley that operates the air conditioner. You gotta replace those before you can get the air conditions turned back on and find out what's wrong with those. And the last time that I checked on, a couple of years back, it was like ten grand a truck. I'm not sure where it's at now, but I have a company that's checking into giving us a price on what it would take to at least do the water pumps, and then they can look into the air condition issues. Look, that's where we're at on it.
Is there more than one company out there that does this?
Yes.
Okay, we need, try to get two.
Yes.
Okay, all right, unless it's a solus type thing, and then we'll just get a letter, but, yeah, we need to get two bids or two quotes, and then we'll go from there, but we, we'll find the money.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Anything else, Bob?
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bobby. Ward Three, Mr. LaFontaine.
Two things, one, the event down on the beach, Sunday was super, I mean, it was a really nice event. Thanks to everybody that got out and helped with that, all the departments that was out there, everything, I mean, it was really nice. Got a lot of positive feedback on it.
Good, thank you.
And then the only other thing I have is, I've been seeing people with the metal detectors inside the parks digging. I know a lot of them fill their holes and stuff back in, but I guess they're looking for coins and jewelry and things like that. You know, if they're filling the holes and stuff back in, you know, that wouldn't be as bad, but, you know, some of them just kinda dig and keep moving and keep moving, and then what you do is you create all the little spots where you step in the holes and twist ankles for kids and this, that, and the other. Really needs to be something that we probably need to look into. You know, if it's, if they're not filling the holes and all that in, and it may just be one person going out there doing it, doing a, you know, excellent job of putting everything back.
Right.
All it takes is that one to come through there and dig up all over the place, and then you got a bunch of holes around for kids to twist ankles and stuff, so could you have Willie check on that?
I will.
And if that's the case, then we'll put signs or something up.
You see it mostly at bourgeois?
At both of them.
Okay, all right. We'll have Willie look into.
Both of the parks on this side, I'm not sure if they've been to the park on the, early, yeah, but I know on this side, I've seen it.
Okay, all right, thank you, Shane. Ward Four, Mr. Clark.
Oh, nothing tonight, Mayor.
All right, thank you, let's move forward. Under public comments, we have Mr. James Moody here with Caden's Health Insurance, our Cades Health Insurance representative, and Mr. Justin Ladner, who give a little shout-out to there.
Who's gonna call me tomorrow?
James Moody's gonna talk about city health insurance.
Frank Wardell was gonna join, he regrets he couldn't come tonight, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good board, good evening. I would be very grateful in my comments, as I won't go into a great amount of detail. However, this is just a follow-up meeting that I did wanna have for the board, to my meeting that I joined you all towards the end of June during the summer. When we looked at our, when we last looked at our made claims, we were about $13,000 paid claims for the month of May. We fast-forward now to all these claims, we're about $306,000 up from claims outlay from Blue Cross in Mississippi. A lot of that's being predicated on a couple of claimants. Obviously, we need to keep those claimants anonymous publicly, however, I wanted to give a very quick update just on the overall plan performance. As of right now, our regular plan, which is the plan that all active employees are on, all other employees, we're running 164% loss ratio. We have a COBRA plan, which is obviously our COBRA participants. That plan itself is running just around 1700% the total loss ratio. Now, again, don't let that scare you, that's just the two people, two or three people that are actually on the COBRA plan. Now, when we aggregate those loss ratios together, the COBRA and the active plan, we have about 204% loss ratio total, okay? As of right now, we do have one particular subscriber on our plan that is really accounting for about 30% of overall claims, okay? About $225,000 total claims that have been paid out of one particular claimant. Out of that, $225,000, $157,000 have actually been paid out while that particular individual was on COBRA, and about $68,000 on the active plan. So if you look on the first two pages, it's just premium versus claims over the past 12 months. But if you look right here on these last two pages, you see a breakdown by members. You will see the top claimant at $167,000, and then you'll see member two at $67,000, that same number. So, that person is, like I said, driving about 30% of the overall claims cost. Now, when we look at our overall premium outlay, and we aggregate the COBRA premium, and we aggregate the active premium, we're looking at about a total of $750,000 of claims that have been paid out over the course of 12 months. But we look at $368,000 of premium that's actually been paid in Blue Cross in Mississippi. So us in business, we always understand, obviously, if you, you know, if you pay more out of expenses versus if you're taking in profit, I think we know the answer here for that. So, all in all, guys, we're running about 204%, with Blue Cross itself, it's about 204% down from where they really would like to be. Ideal numbers are normally around 80, 85%, try to keep it below that. So, again, I just wanted to come here, we're still some time out from the renewal. I spoke to Blue Cross Mississippi this afternoon. We still are about a month or so out from the renewal coming, and they don't even have any indications from me for me at this point as far as what they're thinking as far as the renewal could be. I told them what I have advised you all on, and they are comfortable with that number. Again, it's not saying it will be that, but again, we just wanna be safe and cautious as well for budgetary reasons.
When is that renewal, James?
January first, we're about low seventy-five days out, they have to. So we still do have a little time, so I suspect end of the month, early October, we'll start to see that renewal. So, this is my second, obviously, my second board meeting through all I've been through administration, I've been working closely with them, and I think they have some creative ways, things we're trying to do to help prevent some of these problems. But overall, I just wanna, again, provide another follow-up to that meeting that we did out there in the summer, just for clarity, but also a follow-up so you all know how to prepare. I hate to be the grim reaper here, but it's good that we's getting rid of it.
Does anybody have any other questions for James? All right, James, after you speak to Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're gonna need you to get real creative, though. Okay, put a lot of thought into it, so.
We'll work hard.
We're working on what we need to do on I N., like you said, we just need to move forward and continue to provide health insurance for the employees, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, James. All right. Item B, Mark Schiffer requested an extension of time on two shipping containers on his property. Mr. Schiffer here, come on up to the podium, please, sir. Can you, go ahead and state your name, please?
My name is Mark Schiffer.
And your address?
In Mississippi, it's 10049 Eden Street.
Okay.
In Waveland, Mississippi.
All right, tell us the situation, please.
I came here in January, got a waiver from y'all, which I'm very grateful for. I moved some containers up April twentieth, and I had a six-month waiver, so that ends October twentieth. And in the meantime, I've had two difficulties. But first, let me tell you that we're talking about anchoring them, they are in fact anchored. I used a tugboat anchor on one end, and I got some seven-eighths wire that's wrapped around two trees on the other end, and the two containers are tethered together, and they are in fact used for just tool storage only. There's a tractor. There's a tractor in one, and, uh, the tractor implements in the other one, which have, in fact, cleaned things up around there, 'cause now you don't have a tractor out there with the stuff all chained to a tree, so it's a little better. I built a pad. The pad is, uh, about five-foot elevation above sea level, and the containers are sitting on that pad, so we need about a, by my calculations, about a six or seven-foot event, you know, tidal event for them to float. And if they do float, they're not leaving the property, so they're, they're anchored pretty good. The, uh, uh, in order to build this house that I showed you plans for last time, uh, we had to, uh, apply for, uh, we had to do a thing called the wetlands delineation, which they draw a line across your property, and they decide what, what's wetlands and what's uplands. And, uh, then the process is that you, uh, contact the Corps of Engineers, who reaches out to four or five other agencies and coordinates the, uh, permit process. That permit process started last April. Uh, we changed the, changed the game a little bit because of a rule change. And so this particular process started September of twenty twenty-two. The state of Mississippi got, uh, their information last December, and they didn't act on it till June. So now, uh, I can't, uh, they, as a matter of fact, I, uh, I started working on the upland side, put the pad and the, the, uh, containers, because they told me that they'd come out in April. That's the reason that the containers are there, otherwise I wouldn't have put them. And, uh, in any event, to make a long story short, I suspect, I can't guarantee, but I suspect they'll be finished in the month of September. Uh, in order to get the state of Mississippi going, uh, we just went out there with a backhoe, and they came out and stopped us. And then we got the state representative here to call them, and magically, we got this permit within a week. So I'm figuring that if I don't get the permit from the feds in, uh, another week or so, that I'll call federal representatives for this state, my state, and see what can be done about that. It takes ten days to, to build the, uh, to build the, uh, dirt mound for the, uh, for the, uh, house. It's gonna go to a ten-foot elevation. Uh, that contractor is on standby. The, uh, piling, pile-driving contractor, he'd be there about a week. He's on standby. And, uh, I've got, uh, quotes out for all the other contractors, and they're all on standby. And I apologize that it's taking so long, but, uh, I just can't get going till somebody gives me a piece of paper with a, uh, go-ahead on it. But I do expect that, um, I'll have the permit in the month of September. So say we get dirt guy the month of October, uh, that would give us piling guy the month of November, and then the, um, containers will disappear.
So you think you're requesting another six-month extension?
Um, I'm just gonna ask for about four months. I'm gonna ask for January because, uh, because, uh, you know, I, I don't know what else is gonna happen if we're...
During the holidays, not much is gonna happen.
We have a rain delay or some event or something.
Okay. Does anybody wanna make a motion that we extend Mr. Schiffer's?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Ward three, make some motion.
I'll second.
Ward four, seconds. Any further discussion? Any questions of Mr. Schiffer? Okay, I think we should go ahead and give him a six-month extension. I don't think during, uh, November, December, beginning of January, he's gonna get much done during the holidays. So, um, the motion is to give Mr. Schiffer a, a six-month extension on his shipping containers. So no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries, four zero. See, Miss, you know, see the bur- building permit about, building department about getting the permit extension? I'll talk to Josh right there.
Thank you all very much.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Freiter, you have an agenda item to speak about? Okay.
Brian Freiter, front of South Beach Boulevard. As chairman of the planning and zoning, I would like to, uh, speaking for myself and the board, I would like to thank Mrs. Willie for her wonderful assistance to us, uh, her knowledge of the zoning regulations is just beyond anybody's, um, can imagine. Um, and so she's gonna be difficult to replace, and we will miss her so much. So just wanted to wish her good luck in the new endeavor, and thank you again.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freiter. We will miss her, and I, I ask every day if she's changed her mind yet, but, okay. Got until the end of the week to keep asking you. All right, let's move along to board business. Item A, motion to approve the depository docket of claims, paid and unpaid, dated September fifth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of four hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-three cents?
Move.
Ward, ward two, motion.
Okay, ward two moves.
Okay, second.
Ward one, seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Motion to approve the operating utilities docket of claims, paid and unpaid, dated September fifth, twenty twenty-three, in the amount of a hundred and four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-three cents?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Ward one moves. Ward four, seconds. Any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item C, motion to approve work order twenty-two dash zero zero two dash zero one zero, in the amount of thirty-two thousand for engineering services related to street repairs. Ruby, four, and Tyler Streets by Kenichi Engineering and Surveying.
I'll move.
Ward four moves?
I'll second.
Ward three, seconds. Any discussion? This month, this, these streets are being repaired with bond money that we had left over from last year's paving of streets.
Do we have a timeline on when it's gonna start?
Um, we're probably gonna have to put it out to bid, and then we'll, we'll go from there.
I don't know how far along he is on the plans and specs to put to bid, but figure about forty-five days from once the, the ad first hits.
Okay.
The lady, Ms. Ladner on Tyler Street?
Yes.
I spoke to her Sunday about this, so.
Awesome.
Okay, all right, let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item D, motion to approve change order number one dash one from Abercrombie Underground Solutions LLC, revising the contracted price from sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents to sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-six cents, an increase of five thousand dollars for installation of additional wiring. Note, change order number one, accepting alternate number one in the amount of eight thousand, six hundred and fifty was approved by this board on eight one twenty-three.
I'll move.
Ward three moves?
I'll second.
Ward four, seconds. The way I understand it is, um, we didn't really know. We, we passed it at eighty-six fifty and came in at five thousand, so we're actually saving money on this motion. Okay, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Item E, motion to set up the following new bank account at People's Bank with Mayor Jay Trapani, City Clerk Lisa Plantion, and Alderman Shane LaFonte, his signatories. One, new savings account titled City Investment Funds, and approved to close the Trinity Capital Investors accounting, account transfer in all investment funds other than ARPA funds into the new bank savings account. ARPA money invested with Trinity will be transferred directly into the ARPA bank account.
I'll move.
Ward four moves?
Second.
Ward? Ward one, seconds. Any discussion?
So it's, it's gonna be two accounts?
Two, yeah.
We already have the ARPA account set up, so we're just gonna transfer everything other than the ARPA money into this new account, City Investment.
And the ARPA money will only go into the ARPA account?
Right.
So you have two separate accounts with Trinity, an ARPA account and a regular investment account.
Okay.
All right, no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
I got one question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, Bob.
What, uh, the, the Trinity investment, what's the difference on the interest rates by moving it? I know we said it before, but I couldn't remember what it was.
People's is five point five. I don't know what Trinity was.
Okay, yeah, I think that's...
It is fluctu- because of, Bobby, because of the nature of the investments that that money was placed in by those financial advisors, it has fluctuated, and you've had some months of gain, some months of not gain, so.
Okay.
But this is much more consistent with...
Sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so ward one voted yes. Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. Moving on to planning and zoning, number one, Gary Ve- Veawald, owner of the property company known as Three Eleven Terrace Avenue, possable one sixty-one E dash zero dash zero two dash one sixty dot zero zero one, has made an application for the temporary use of an RV during the new construction of his primary residence. The RV permit will allow occupancy for a hundred and eighty days. Mr. Come on up. I know I probably butchered your last name, so go ahead and repeat it, please, and...
Veawald.
Veawald, okay. So you, you're building right around the corner, and you just wanna have an RV there while you are building?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Is there a slab there already?
Josh, is there a slab there already?
He's got a foundation there.
Foundation's there.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, ward three, make some motion.
I'll second.
Ward four, seconds. Any further discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Are you there in the trailer already?
Yes.
And when did you, do you have a permit for the trailer to be there yet? Have, will you issue the permit to, to be, to put the trailer there and be living in it already?
No, we did not apply for a permit.
How long have you been, had the trailer there, living in it?
A week.
Um, so it was approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission, but did they tell you that you had to be approved here before you could, before you could actually move in and do all that?
No, I thought the Planning and Zoning Commission did that.
Okay. Everything that happens at Planning and Zoning is merely a recommendation to this board to vote on, so.
I have all this.
All right, any other discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, four zero. Thank you. Consent agenda. Motion to approve the following consent agenda items as numbered A through L.
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second it.
Ward three, seconds?
We have one change. Um, under D, where it says Tim Bradshaw, that needs to be Travis Bradshaw. That's only change.
Any other discussion? Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. All right, uh, we need a motion to consider entering the closed session related to personnel issues in the court department?
I'll move.
Ward three, ward four moves?
I'll second.
Ward three, seconds. Let's go ahead and vote.
Yes.
One, yes. Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero. I need a motion to enter executive session related to personnel issues in the court department.
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Ward four moves. Ward one, seconds. Let's go ahead and vote. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries, four zero.
Bobby, are you gonna participate by phone? We just bring the phone in. Two there?
Yes, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
The, uh...
I hate to tell you, that's spoken a lot.
Yeah, I know, yeah. The, um, we have a tree orchard. Protect the tree. Protect the tree. And if they, if they wanna cut down, they would grab, depending on the size of the tree, they would say how many trees they need to replace. And, uh, one of the things that haven't adopted our recommendation would be that, what, what happened is, they'd come in, and they'd get there, and they'd, they'd go tear it down. And they said that, you know, you would do anything. So I was gonna say, why don't we collect one upfront, okay, before we, we collect a thousand bucks, okay? My recommendation is, and this is what you come up, is that if I decide to replace three of them, okay, and then we would keep two fifty, or, and we would have to rebate back the seven fifty to them, okay? And that's where people brought a rejection. They do that, they have to approve it, have all the meeting, and then they have to check. And that's where people brought a objection. They do that, they have to approve it, have all the meeting, and then they have to check.
Small town, bro.
You guys got it.
The others, Joe, haven't you said?
I don't want to come up here on a Sunday morning, trying to walk on my kids, my dogs.
The others, look, the others are judging us. We just take a thousand dollars and build a bank. And their cost of building, so. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The way it is right now, there's really no enforcement.
There's no enforcement, so this would be enforced. If we got their money, they're going to do something.
Yeah, because we have, right now, in the last year and a half, uh, people have let us cut down protected trees, or the city twenty-one trees.
We got like a list?
We have a list. John has a list.
Does she?
I gave her, I threw her an updated list here. I told her, she printed out the list for me. And I went through all of the records. I just went back and read it. And there was like three people that she didn't have on the list. I gave her the names and she put them in the script. So she just pulls them up and she prints out the list.
Is that why it's going to raise a little tree?
Yeah, well, that was a variable to the, to my idea. Yeah, and, yeah, because now we have a lot of trees that are sitting in somebody's yard and you're like, this, you can't plant them until. You said. Written out a list for you because she's, because she knows where, 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 and then, and why don't you get a list? Give me the list and I'll check before my list to make sure we get it. And you'd be happy, you'd be able to be happy to help you contact all these people that owe us trees. The dream is to ask, show us proof that you gave your trees.
Yeah.
Get your, your tree or.
Again, that person might have to say.
Well.
We need to talk about that enforcement.
There is, there is, there is enforcement.
There's penalties enforcement. Yeah, or any, you know, any law, like, or any.
So we did, I, I did contact one, uh, Jay had called, and I called this guy and said, no, he called me and said that he was building, he was ready to, he owed two trees. And I said, hey, we got this new thing, but if you want, you can just pay two hundred and fifty dollars a tree. He goes, oh, all right. He came down the next morning and paid the five hundred dollars to sit here. So if these people know that if you had that option, maybe they would go and build and just give us.
Again, on the other side, you know, if the guy owes us a thousand dollars and he wants to plant two, two of the trees on his properties, you know.
Yeah, the way it's fair, give us a thousand dollars and he gets nothing back. Yeah, the way it is right now, they can either plant the trees on their properties or donate them to the city.
Again.
They owe twenty-one trees. Yeah, they're, we owe twenty-one trees. We have eleven, so we have thirty-two trees now. And these, the trees have to be, uh, over eight feet tall. So these trees are, the eleven trees that this guy was bought, they were a hundred and seventy dollars a tree.
Yes.
You know, what it's, it's, the, the way we came up with the two hundred and fifty dollars is a hundred and fifty dollar tree and a hundred. So this guy, they actually gave us eleven trees. He didn't give us the money to plant. At least we have trees. So I. Eight foot tree? Yeah. Oh, they're beautiful trees. Yeah. There's a hundred and fifty two dollar tree right there. So anyway, we're.
The whole idea was to try to get some type of enforcement.
And the, the way the ultimate event is right now, they, uh, Brian has made these suggestions on all the different ordinances, but instead of doing one at a time, they want to do them all together. We need to get this, this ordinance for the change on the protected tree.
Well, you know, they, they broke that rule when they, they just changed the order.
Set back. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
We have two major ones, that's one, and then we have a proposal on short-term rentals. And political.
And we. They issued years. Yeah.
And I think, I think, they have a legislative law that both communities can, I'd say, choose.
What are the motions? I don't have a three percent.
No, Laurel, Laurel, I think, Laurel, I'm originally.
I got. I wish you planned to be trying to stop that.
The three percent?
No, no, no.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, but. Right, we don't have any.
Yeah, yeah, you know. Three percent, you know, that's a little bit of change.
You don't have ordinances on shipping containers.
They have to register, they have to approve or ensure, inspection, of, of, expected of all that.
Well, you'll be busy for a while.
Yeah.
I've been chairman of planning and zoning for the last six years. Before we had a change of mayor's name. And so if there's anything we can do, you know, let us know. So we all.
It's a, it's a, that job, it was. I was going to talk to you about that.
I, I knew I wasn't going to head, keep it. Did I tell you that your car got? Yeah, well, yeah, I had one. It was split window? Yeah. Well, actually. That's a sixty-three. Co-rent. Yeah, you're. I have a car, I have a four. Had it sixty-eight. I'm on nine. Had it sixty-eight. I do have an O-six for the. All right, well, we just want to introduce ourselves. I appreciate the stuff. It's all right, don't worry. Welcome. Thank you. Uh, it has to be fifteen days ahead. Oh, it would be then.
I've got an approval, I've got an approval publication. I've got approval about your, I didn't look at here. I'm bad, so. I've got the approval publication. I'm making sure I got all. Whatever they, so they have to come back for us.
Yeah, the way that it was. Just so they can all look over it and recommend it.
It's one of those, I know, that pass on, uh, set lifetime, you know, you don't have to be a, who's coming back, coming, coming.
Yeah, this one.
About life, this, about life.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I get what you're saying, you can't build a fence, you can't have a fence. It's like walls.
Believe it, believe it.
I don't know where.
Believe it, I mean, I think.
It should be in there. I got the publication in the office. I saw what the diamond here in income can be stuff. Well, the first thing was about. Oh, the taxes, the village. There's a big article there about the village being. Tomorrow, the workshop, tomorrow, the workshop.
Yeah, tomorrow, the workshop.
And then you got Thursday.
So I want, I, uh, I'll see you.
Yeah, I'm going to have to be there. Oh, well, it's quite a lot of work. Man, I'm here now. Every time.
Yeah, I want to target their kids. Now they go off. Two, three, ten million dollars. Yeah, did you see a basic Lewis? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Ten percent increase in the. Now, especially if you have property. Well, it's good and bad because of my. They added more. They changed the break, that accounted for. Well, yeah, let's be honest.
That's crazy. I've never heard anything like that in my life.
No.
I think it's interesting, some of the cities have, they were tired of, they just say, they did, they was off with the tired part. I would be saying, one of you was six kids. I, I got two of them that way. I found the two of them.
By the way, locally. Right. Confiscate. Ever heard? Yes, it's, uh, an archive. Oh, okay, yeah. And funny, I know, back in the yard, you have one in heat, it'd be on, they always burn this. Um, some of them, who had children, left them, went back. They, they, you know, they had a child, left it, went back. And, 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 it's free for the sport. This guy started sending him to train fast. Which was, was, yeah. Yeah. Charity, or, or, change, merchant training, south, and so, uh, uh, follow. Exactly. And play, walk from there. They orphaned, insured, and trained, and ends up, but, but five that came here. And some of the actors were defendants. I have to stay there, uh, so. And, and. I feel pretty same, so. I'll be still. So. The tall can be going all the way. We helped you. We had an email that she was about to, she was about to. For, for, for average. Very lucky. Oh, well, that's also, I'm very, I'm very anxious. Oh. I only keep it out. So we said, thank you, fair, because I'm a little lighter, and it's, it's, it's. Some of the floor. So we have an opposition. So this, so this. That's what we can prove. Always trying to comment in this place. In fact, they're perfect right now. We'll do it again. Spray. This, uh, Bernie, she's talking, she's, she's. He's not for. Women, he's going to charity. Was. Yeah, he was in every class. They get them on, and they're like, it's good. Fight the pain, we did, where it did have to end. Yeah. Now, we used to. Probably were all, you know, the ramp. America. So. So. It's a boss, almost. Yeah, you have that. Yeah. Yeah, you know, step off, or the rest. And they, they put. I stepped off, and they get around the drought. And then, that's like twenty, uh, actors. And they're. Play multiple parts. Lots of kids. It's certainly a good play. Well, she, she. Well, a lot of times, but to play, she got. It cannot change. To the first. In the art. You know, the present. What they want. In, in fact, it's very good. They had her listed.
I used to say.
She's got, he puts water on her. Finally, that's a. Two of the director and from the board, it's all of the staff. And one of the, one of the sentence. And the director, they acquired the seal and that. He was there so much and breathing.
It's been so much. Started over with a grandad. Four months old, granddaughter. You wanna see a picture? Because I don't wanna hear it.
Well, the winner dies a lot.
She was watching the part. Sage, Sage, Eloise. Look at my other daughter. I mean, they just have little foals. That's my youngest adopted. She's, she's a nine. Tell me some sticks.
Well, I see, maybe for a couple of pockets.
Cause I couldn't have it more, my wife wanted to. It was kind of a godly thing. We wanted her, but. We found out she had a sister. Oh. Six kids.
Yes. Comes out and plays. Say, no, 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 you can't do that. It takes me.
You gotta take both, you can't split them up like that. So, Fro, I was in the yard. I was, I was in the yard, you know, I was picking up some old farmer. They were all kind of. Still, I'm trying to believe you were. She's scared, that's the Beatles. Like, there's Beatles, there's Beatles in here. You know, I was gonna say something to her, but she goes, pretty bad.
Wish you'd turn. Now, all down, not the essence. Rain now, they could. Oh. Oh, you try. So you have a bit too early. Two, three, four, twelve.
So there are different tests, look at it different.
Cage and brought. I'm ready to put. I was a job. So did you.
So I answered, you know, I love the state. Think I can handle. Number of kids.
I don't think so. Not like, not like you said.
Yeah, that baby box thing. One of the things, uh.
I mean, you know, it's like all the stories you hear. It's just that such a long history.
When you say in America, it's like, we're lost. Well, you probably was there.
How old were you, how old were you in, uh? When we lived in Austin. I have a drunk for her. And the teacher probably. It did take a long, about a year. Okay.
Sure.
Anybody that says.
It's crazy. She was all. The only reason we give a. Is when we have. She can do a plan, you say, you say. She could do this girl. Talk like Mary. Since they. They're. So. Select it after. She got married. Yeah, we had. And we balance. All right.
I was scared for that.
All right. Doctor name? Greg. Mission, marriage, children. I.
Cal. Cal.
So what was that right, is that a tater? Is it tater? That thing right now. You know, your tater. Tape? I don't know. You talk about the state as well. I didn't, I didn't tell this account, I'm, I'm. We had the boat show.
It's a little. It's a little.
I was thinking.
Yo, now I'm.
All right. I'm trying to stop my. All right. See you later.
No.
I know, I'm telling you. Ten dollars. Now, now, it's.
Do you want to?
Oh, that's the, that's the.
Only issue, I mean, even.
Are they the primary?
Amazon. Oh, Bill Wayne, the world. You sold this stuff.
You know, the director. To be taught. So there's some, I mean, there's some.
Wait, you don't have that much. I'm telling you. Now, we got the season already, that's how we got. Yeah. I told you.
I know, I just spent ten dollars.
Yeah, that was what I got. Yes. Yes, 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 intelligent.
Well, I did, but then on eBay.
Were you a car guy? Car?
I like a Shelby, I like a. Old Mustang Shelby, this makes it a car. I don't know, man, one day, maybe, I'm working in the sales.
Ah, I hear you. I'm sixty, I'm probably younger.
I don't know how to say it, but. Always have. Oh, really?
Yeah, it's not, I just got. Do like. You know, you got a.
There's a few angles. How did you get out there and trial by fire, huh?
Yeah, so. Right, we used to build. Put the side up.
Me too. Where?
He don't know nothing about that, he was too young.
Is that money hill?
No, money hill.
Money hill.
Was it up toward between Pearl River and Vogelmsa or somewhere?
I don't know where that's from. He don't know. He didn't stay there long enough.
He heard a slide, now he gonna try a man.
It's around Franklin.
We was both knowing show boys too.
Anyway, so we used to. Central fifteen, sixteen foot cap station. Oh. Right, we got. It's not so. Three.
But it's. Yeah, it's got. It's not wild.
When we turned it on, it's.
It's a trial. Go down.
So she, so my wife was so.
I should've been crying.
You know, you have to just hang on.
She was. It's not worse than that, I got this. That's weird. I said I'm gonna do anything, cause I'm like. Now, I can still do it, but. Have to, have to, had to keep myself to do it some.
Pretty big.
Really? Still.
I don't know anybody who saw a.
Just.
That was.
So door shut. You know what?
Three, 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 one ninety east, something like.
How far around Gas, Military Road?
You remember what Donalways is? Was not Lishman? You remember Donalways?
Yeah, Donalways.
Another way, that was called, another way, that, that got down, and then it was all spotted out. It's running down.
It's not that one, the one that. Has towards the. Military.
Past military, going home, home.
It's called, they used to call Hollywood one ninety east.
Is it White Kitchen, pretty close to White?
So, past White Kitchen.
Past military.
See if he coming back up and does slide out.
Yeah.
All right, instead. Know where the Oak Pass is?
I asked Mike.
When you come three, three months on free most.
Still, if you come, if you come back, see about a mile, mile and a half. That's where North Shore. Oh, you can see?
It was all North Shore, you heard it too, doesn't it? No, I don't think it was North Shore. Maybe.
Clement Hall right up here.
No, but I mean, it's kinda like. It's like.
Yeah, no, high school shop. Yeah.
But that is the North Shore status.
Actually, this. They should. Get a ice cream. David, I think it was down to eight, three, eight five.
At the time.
The spur we could send this over, it's. You got this with.
Then they changed that.
I spent more time. I property was teenage.
You can tell. Really? Yeah. You can furloughs in the. Yeah.
Shoot, I was in a bar in fourteen, man.
Had a great.
Didn't care. Old town slide.
You'd be able to stir it.
Yeah. And then pick up the plan, finish with the same things they talking. Make a show. For this one.
If you find cigarettes, that's six years old.
My mom started to go one hundred.
So I can.
I started smoking, and we couldn't get.
But this one wasn't as bad as. Now, this one. She said it's gonna start with this thing. You'll see Cascade, she said. So we're gonna do that.
That's not bad. She, that's like ten dollars right there. Like a cigarette's like eight dollars, man.
You want the robbers, and put seven in.
You talking about this, you know that store that was right by North Shore?
The juniors.
They had a, uh, one Chinese fellow with long hair, like a mole. He say once they were.
It's really.
Yeah, yeah. I have a tendency, I think it was, I think it was. Takes it on there. I would hold up a smoker, sure. That's where we got our cigarettes. I go to Waffle House.
They used to have a bar, right before I was reaching for the kids. My, it was a bar, cheap, cool, sixty dollars. Smoking, drinking outside.
I do.
Yeah, they were. There was the groans. I'm reached juniors, I reached the wrong. There was a little road, it went right to the back.
And hope was that.
Two, four.
The penguins.
Is that much younger than you, man?
So like, John, you forty?
Forty-four.
Be bad.
Hey, I'm glad, I'm happy about that. I got a four month brand, man, a brand though.
Mr. Clarence, what happened, Mr. Clarence? They forgot.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I need a motion to come out of execu- executive session with no action taken.
Move.
Second.
Ward one moves, ward three. Seconds, um, let's go ahead and vote, ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Ward two, give it.
Ward one moves, ward two, seconds, let's go ahead and vote, ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Ms. Lisa.
I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Ma'am, this is that, uh.